Diane, are we ready to start?
Yes, it's six o'clock.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Siri City Council. I have something I need to read before we get started. This meeting will be held in accordance with Executive Order N 2920 issued by California Governor Gavin Newsom on March 17, 2020, the Ralph M. Brown Act, California Government Code Section 54950 et cec, and the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act. This meeting will not be physically open to the public. All members of the public may participate and comment via the application Zoom. Zoom meeting information and call-in information was posted on the agenda and on the city's website. Remote public comment is also available by emailing the city clerk at The city clerk will read your comment into the record during the public comment period. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Drossit. Councilmember Drossit.
Looks like his screen maybe is frozen up.
Shall we wait to see? He's probably going to rejoin.
I'm back.
There we go. So we're doing the roll call. Councilmember Drossit?
Here.
Councilmember Condit?
Here.
And Vice Mayor Rhino?
Here.
Mayor Viera and Councilmember Klein are both absent this evening.
Next, we will have the invocation. It was scheduled to be delivered by Pastor Michael Hanks, who is not available, but we will have Mr. Michaels from the City of Siri's will be doing the invocation for us. Mr. Michaels?
Thank you very much. Let's bow our heads. You heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings that you have given us. We pray, Lord, that you continue to help all of us get safely through this COVID-19 pandemic. We ask that you watch over us and keep our families safe. To your Father, we ask that you continue to help guide our city leaders to make good decisions that help improve the lives of the people who live and work here in the Siri's community. We ask for these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Michaels. Next, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone could stand, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next, we have presentations. I see none. Citizen communication. While the city council welcomes and encourages participation in city council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes. Resolution number 2006-106 for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the city council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the city council from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the city council. Citizens are entitled to address the city council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. Public comments will now be accepted through Zoom. For those participating through the web, please raise your hand to request to speak. There's a hand icon bottom on the bottom of your screen. If you are participating by telephone, please press star nine on your phone. The city clerk will call your name in the order the requests are received. When it's time for you to speak, the city clerk will unmute your microphone. City clerk, please provide the name of each person that has requested to speak.
Yes, Vice Mayor. The first person that's requested to speak is Dave Pratt. Mr. Pratt, I will unmute your mic.
Good evening, Mr. Pratt.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. This is Dave Pratt of Siri's. I was hoping these meetings was going to be at the council, but apparently we're in lockdown again. The last meeting, I fell asleep through the finances and like some of my movies, I woke up in the credits. And basically, several of us been trying to get part of the marijuana money set aside, but was unfortunately put in in general funds. And in general funds, I was hoping that some of it would be set aside for a rainy day, and it wasn't. Not only did you spend the monies that you did get from marijuana, but you spent money that you hadn't, didn't get, and that you're never going to get. I knew sooner or later the marijuana people would be asking for some of their money back. Instead, you gave big pay raises, bonuses, and golden parachutes. And unfortunately, I've been expecting this to happen, but it all came sooner than I expected that we'd have it turned down in the market. And everybody's in lockdown again. It didn't slow the traffic down at all. Other than that, another thing is I'm glad that finally that Whitmore finally got sidewalks for the school kids. And I like what they did at Moore Road and Whitmore with the raised islands. The Houston and the East Gate people are really going to enjoy that when they start going that way again. But it looks good. Other than that, I'm... Thank you.
Mr. Pratt, I wanted to address your comments about the budget.
Yes.
That what we did was we passed the continuing resolution, which allocated a certain amount of money to keep the city running. We had to do that by July 1 because you have to have a budget adopted. The council was not prepared to adopt the entire budget because we have concerns about what our revenues will be come September. So all we did was allow, we're allowing the city to continue operating until September. And in September, we're going to have a discussion about the actual budget and hopefully adopt our budget for the entire year in September.
Well, I hope that what marijuana money you get, you set that aside and don't expect because sooner or later, then they're going to probably ask for more of their money back. And you're relying on something that, that, that there's just too much black market and stuff out there. So hopefully, everybody, all the cities and counties and everybody, and it looks like hopefully the Mezurail and some of the other money, monies will come through, but they're going to be in the same boat as everybody else.
Well, when we have our budget discussion in September, I encourage you to attend and voice your concerns.
Yes. Thank you.
Next person that raised their hand is Lee. I believe it's Lee Brandt. I will unmute your mic.
Good evening, Mr. Brandt.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Well, as you know, 4th of July is over with, and I am not going to call or I'm not going to ask to ban legal fireworks. I totally support PD and fire. I think those guys probably did the best that they possibly can. But holy smokes, I mean, you know, it was insane out here. I'm thinking that maybe we, because you guys could consider raising the fine from $1,000 to $10,000 because $1,000 is a drop in the bucket for somebody who spends $3,000 or more on fireworks. As you very well know, there have been bottle rockets all over the place, found in yards, on roofs, on top of cars. There have been photos taken. Nail it. I'm assuming Rick, wherever you're at, there you are. I'm assuming Rick got all the reports. And, you know, I just hope that, you know, that something can be, and I don't have the answer, and I know you guys don't have the answer either. You know, did the drone, did the drone help at all? I mean, I would be afraid to put that drone up in the air for some idiot trying to shoot it down. You know, but it's just, it's just, it's the lawless people that just don't care for anybody else. And I would say they probably more likely do not have a dog or a veteran in their family because, I mean, it was absolutely insane, as you all very well know. And I, I, I don't know what to tell you. You know, I don't know what to suggest. I wish I did. I wish we all had the answer. You know, somebody had the wise idea of setting, making the legal fireworks, just having to worry, set them up inside the house. I don't make any sense. But anyway.
Mr. Brandt, I believe that in August, we're going to be having a public hearing council discussion on fireworks. Is that right, Mr. Westbrook?
Yep. Yeah, we'll put it on as a discussion item for the first meeting in August.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Well, I'll be here. Also, I would just kind of like to know the status of, of the Super Walmart. Sorry, Tom. Don't mean to put you on the spot.
That's okay, Mr. Brandt. We're still working with them through the process, hopefully within the next month or so. If everything holds true, that we would have their final map and their subdivision agreement to the city council for their consideration, then that'll be the, basically the start of the project. So we're still working with them diligently to get that project underway.
Awesome. And that's it. All I can say is you guys have been doing a terrific job. Good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Brandt. City clerk, do we have anyone else that wishes to speak?
Yes. Next person is Yasmin. I will unmute your mic now.
Hello, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. So I just wanted to touch base on the COVID situation. Are you guys, as leaders, going to be enforcing the mandate that our governor just recently, today, issued? It's just been a big problem. As you guys know, I was in the last meeting, and you guys were excited about opening up the community center. I know that you guys talked about that last week, and even the reps said that our local law enforcement had better things to do than ticket people that are not wearing masks. And this is where we're at today, that we're in a hot spot, and it feels like we're not taking this serious. Are you guys wearing masks? What are you guys doing to have our citizens be responsible? Because our numbers keep going up. I walk into State Mart, people are not wearing masks. People are not abiding by the rules, and that has to come from leadership. I just want to know what you guys are doing as far as COVID goes. That was my first concern.
Okay.
Second concern is, or just a question for you guys. I know there's a local teen group called Teens for Change. As you guys may know, they did put on a protest, and I did see some of council members there, which is greatly appreciated. I just wanted to know, have you guys reached out to them since then and offered support? These are teens that are trying to make a change, trying to have their voices heard, and they're just wanting some local leadership. So that's another question. If any of you guys have reached out to them and see what they're going out, what their needs might, what their needs might be, and so on.
Mr. Westbrook, would you like to respond to what the city is doing? I know that you're involved with the emergency group.
Center. Yep. Yes. What we're, what we're doing from a business expectation is trying to educate those folks that may be operating. As the caller mentioned, there was a number of additional businesses and industry that were just added today by the governor, became effective today. So we'll be seeking to do education for those businesses that are operating when they're not supposed to. But at, but at this point, we're looking to just seek education to get compliance.
Thank you. And your second part of your question was the Teens for Change. As a city council, we aren't reaching out to them that I know of. On a personal note, I'm not reaching out to anyone right now because of COVID. I'm in the high-risk group, and so I pretty much, other than shopping that I have to do, I'm staying in my home. So that's all I'm personally doing. And as a group, I don't know that as a whole, the council ever gets together, a group. I don't, I don't know how to explain myself, but typically, if someone approaches us and they wanted to have a meeting with the council, then that would be something that would have to be noticed that we could do. But as a general rule, we don't go out and meet as a group with groups, if that makes any sense to you. And I don't know if any of the other council members have reached out to this particular group or not.
Yeah, I wasn't speaking about like in person to person because obviously we're on lockdown and I'm abiding by the rules as well. But just like an email, letting them know, hey, we're here, we're your local leadership. If you guys need us, let us know how we can amplify your voice. And again, even with Black Lives Matters, like, are you guys speaking out about it? Are you guys getting involved? And I know, don't mean physical, but I'm just using your platforms, using the city's platforms. Has Siri's made a statement about supporting our black citizens here?
No, we haven't.
Vice Mayor, may I interject just real quick? I believe Councilman Drossit came up with the idea that when things do reopen, that we were planning on recognizing these young women, our future seniors at Siri's High School, and we were going to recognize them officially, giving them certificates of recognition for putting together that demonstration. I know myself, Councilman Klein and Councilman Drossit all attended the event. Siri's PD did a wonderful job. The protesters did a wonderful job. I did meet with all the organizers as well, the future seniors at Siri's High School, and I gave them my business card and let them know that I am assessable if they want to reach out, whether it's via email or by phone. I'd be more than happy to talk to them. I'm sure my colleagues feel the same way. But I know the city manager, we were planning on doing that when things kind of got back to order and...
Absolutely.
Thank you for reminding me. I'd forgotten that. Councilmember Condit?
Okay, that's great to hear.
Did you have anything else, Ms. Yasmin? No. City clerk, do you have anyone else that wishes to speak?
Yes, Vice Mayor. Next person is Jeanne Yeakley. I will unmute his mic.
Hi, Mr. Yeakley.
Good evening. Yeah, I'd like to address everybody in the city council with a few things tonight, more than one. I'd like to thank the Siri's Police Department and the Siri's Fire Department for their July 4 holiday fireworks campaign and the continued work on citizen citations and taking care of the many idiots in our community that shouldn't be here to cause these problems. And I don't know about the $10,000 someone mentioned, but I think they ought to go to jail for a while. And number two, I'd like to remind those running for public office, because I noticed that, and I talked to, or I wrote a message to, where is he? Oh, Tom Westbrook, and he got back to me, said the campaign for November 3 is in process now, and you can put signs out. I'd just like to have those individuals, and some of them are there tonight. I can see two of them anyway. And I guess the lawyer guy, he's not there, Helen. Anyway, to remind them to abide by the state, county, and city ordinances on posting political signs, also established by the California Fair Political Practice Commission and regulations on signposting. After the campaign is over, please remove the signs as required. And please don't post them on telephone poles and property that you don't have permission to put it on. We went through this over and over, and you got, this been going on for a while. I'm surprised Siri's hasn't done anything. Some of these political signs, a few of them, are pretty big, and they're on a major thoroughfare in Siri's. And the city, and they were on right of way, but the city evidently didn't notice them after the required time of, I believe, what, 10 days after March 3? They've been up there ever since. And one gentleman is, happens to be a veterinarian, another guy, a chief prosecutor, and another guy, a congressman. These people should know better. And like I said, we're on major thoroughfares since March 3, 2020. Siri's did nothing to remove these from the right of way. I mean, everybody goes past these major thoroughfares, even city employees, and nobody's seen nothing or took action on anything. It's always me. All these individuals are responsible for their actions, and only them. These individuals have sent a message to many individuals who may vote in November. These signs have taken down, or not take, these signs are not taken down when they were supposed to have given Siri's citizens and those passing by a subliminal message. That's what they've done since a lot of time they had to take them down. It's a subliminal message. It's like putting a Coca-Cola sign down there, and you pass it by every day. Eventually, you're going to buy some, you know? So they're kind of cheating the other people by doing the right thing by the political practices of California, by not keeping them up there. But, you know, when it comes down to the very end, they always come down. And I've talked to some of these people, not these individuals, some in the past, and they always say that, oh, they didn't know. Well, that's a lame excuse. So they always use that, oh, I got somebody who does it for me. But then those regulations says you're responsible for placement of each sign. You have to know where they're at and when they're taken down, and they're not supposed to be left up. Okay, number three. Police and code enforcement program in the Siri's of city should put something in the utility bill, and I think I talked to Chief Collins, probably a couple of years ago about this, and so a few on the city council. 4th of July had an ad in there about the fireworks. We should have something in there at least three or four times a year on the utility bill. Informing citizens, they have the right to complain. And I remember, I think Chief Collins had something about a year ago or something on the website that said, "Call anytime about anything," something to that nature. Citizens here are afraid of their neighbors. When something's wrong, they should have the right and the knowledge to be able to call a particular department so they don't have to put up with this stuff. You know, the garbage in the streets, the noise complaints, which I just talked to a few weeks ago with Captain Crane and an officer before him that said, one of the major things in the summer months of most calls is noise complaints. But nobody complains because they're afraid of their neighbors. They can be anonymous, but these people evidently do not know this. But we need to inform our citizens that they have the right to complain when something's wrong in their community, their city, and not to be afraid. They can be anonymous. Thank you.
Mr. Yeakley, I understand what you're saying, but I also believe that you can put all the propaganda out that you want, that people need to contact the city when there's an issue. And there are a lot of people that, like you said, they don't want to, they don't want to call, they don't want to complain, but they're going to continue to, they're going to continue to complain, but they're not willing to contact the city. And the city can only do what they're notified of.
We've never had anything in any literature informing anybody in the city in the 31 years I've lived here that tells people where they can call if they have a problem, you know? Some of us, maybe a language issue, and some of us might not be. But we haven't done it, not once that I know of, unless somebody can tell me different.
Mr. Westbrook, I, I, I don't... On our water bills that come out, is there anything ever listed that, that shows, you know, the different departments and the phone number on the water bill?
I think that's primarily just finance divisions. Is that correct, Letitia?
Correct. That just has to do with your utility bill and who to contact if you have a dispute.
Well, maybe that's something that you could look into to see if just part of the monthly bill, it just stays there as stationary, like it's printed. It's not like something you have to add every month and that you have to pay extra for the printing. I'm not sure how the city does that. But maybe it's something to look into that if you need to contact someone in Public Works, there's a phone number, somebody, I, I don't know. I mean, you're, you're never going to address what everyone's concern is, so you couldn't list all of those. But maybe general departments or something. I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah, I'll see if there's space available on the back of the bill.
Thank you.
Hello?
Thank you, Mr. Yeakley.
Yep, I'm not through.
Oh, okay.
I, I, I understand what you're doing. If you just put the departments in there, phone number. But we have to put up there because the, the city we live in is a large group of Hispanic people and Spanish-speaking people. We have to put something a little bit bigger in there that says, if you have a problem, or however you wish, but get the attention of people. Say, if you have a problem in your neighborhood, you know, call these departments. Let them know. You can be anonymous, you know? And hopefully, we'll get more than the handful of people that come before the city council and complain. Maybe we'll get a little bit more numbers, maybe to multiply. I sure would hope so. And like I said, Chief Collins had something in the past on a website for the fireworks thing, explaining, if you got a problem, call anytime for anything, right? And that's what people in the city of Siri's should be able to do. They should be able to call. And like you said, Vice Mayor Rhino, I understand not everybody's going to do it, but we've never had this out there to, to where people can touch it and say, hey, I can call without being afraid. There's an issue that I've had for a long time or a short period of time, where it's the garbage in the street, some guy built a two-story house next door, and nobody's seen it. Who knows? But these have to be addressed to all these people, you know, to where they feel comfortable with just, not just a little, oh, here's the planning department. If you got a problem, call them. Don't get me wrong, James. But anyway, we haven't done it. We need to address this to the people so it's in a real, simple English that if they got a problem, don't be afraid. Get all the city. We're there for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person is Lisa Montaro. I will unmute her mic.
Good evening.
Good evening. This is such a unique way to have a council meeting. So I want to thank you for the opportunity to make a quick presentation, but I will make one comment back to Mr. Yeakley's previous remarks. Having served on the council before as the vice mayor, I don't think it's been a community issue that we haven't had the phone numbers available to the community, when to call for comments, question, or discussion, or in general, looking for assistance. So not trying to cause any type of debate with Mr. Yeakley on anything. I feel as though this community has been very forthcoming with providing information on social media, website, previous utility bills, and other types of methods for people to communicate with the departments to receive the assistance they're looking for. Generally speaking, it's code enforcement, public safety, and law enforcement. So not to get off track, my reason for wanting to communicate this evening is throughout the entire situation with this COVID-19, the Stanislaus Family Justice Center has continued to operate in a capacity to serve the victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, and human trafficking throughout this entire time without shutting their doors once. My point for bringing this up is that family violence is at all-time high, with the number of people suffering in isolation, the economy shifting significantly, and the fact that we don't have the school system up and running in our traditional sense. The people who are suffering at home are suffering, and the amount of people that need assistance in the community as victims of violence has grown. So my point in this presentation this evening is doing this with each of the councils throughout the Stanislaus County to provide information that we, as the Family Justice Center, are continuing to operate on a daily basis, seeing the victims of crime. And what's unique about that is we don't have the number of mandatory reporters in place to provide the assistance to individuals or to provide those kind of call-ins. So the fact that I'm telling you that the numbers are rising without the benefit of mandatory reporters actually speaks volumes to the number of people that are in trauma in their own lives. So I'm making the council aware of the fact that we've continued to operate consistently throughout the entire pandemic and will continue to do so. And certainly, when the opportunity presents itself, provide information to the city, the council, and to continue to provide information to our public safety officials. Siri's officers have a long-term relationship with... Series's officers have a long-term relationship with the Family Justice Center and very handily bring individuals to our center for assistance. So I wanted to make that point now, but I want to continue to remind people that there are a number of nonprofits doing work out there for the public without going noticed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Moore. Vice Mayor, Mr. Brandt had raised his hand to speak again. Okay. Let me unmute his mic. Mr. Brandt? Okay, I think he lowered his hand. Okay. City Clerk, have we received any public comments through email? Vice Mayor, we have not received any public comment through email. Public comment period is now closed. Next item is appointments to boards and commissions. A Major H appointment, Mr. Westbrook?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Council. This item was scheduled, we had two applicants for these two positions. However, before we could pull this from the agenda, one of the applicants withdrew. So we'll actually need to go out for another, another process to seek applications. And so at this point, we'll just continue this to a future meeting date after we have more applications and more to consider for the vice, or for the Major H.
Thank you. Conflict of interest declaration. Is there anyone on the council that has a conflict with anything on the agenda today? There are no conflicts. Consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and act upon by roll call vote. Is there anyone on the council that would like an item pulled from the consent calendar?
Item number six.
Councilmember Condit, item number six. Is there anyone from the public that would like an item on the consent calendar pulled? I don't see any. Do I, do I have a motion for the consent calendar?
Yeah, move to approve 123845789.
Second.
Roll call, please. Councilmember Durasse?
Yes.
Councilmember Condit?
Hi.
And Vice Mayor Rhino?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. Consideration of item removed from the consent calendar. Resolution number 2020-71, approving a contract with Steve Hallam for continued support for redevelopment and economic development activities. Councilmember Condit?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just had a few questions and a couple of comments. And Mr. Westbrook, if you could just explain why this position wasn't included with other positions that we were considering freezing and unfreezing during the time of the interim budget?
Primarily councilman contents because these are paid through redevelopment proceeds, so they don't have a general fund impact.
Okay, but there were other positions during the interim budget that weren't necessarily general fund impacted, but we still were considering those as well.
Correct. So at the last council meeting, there was a number of positions that were funded out of a water and sewer account that the city council moved forward with.
Okay, well, I, I do wanna say, you know, I've enjoyed working with Mr. Hallam. I think he's a great guy. But I, I do think we need to correct a precedence that we've set in the past of hiring part-time consultants. And this has nothing to do with Mr. Hallam personally. Again, I've enjoyed working with him. I've worked with him in a capacity, both in my professional aspect as well as a council member. And I do enjoy working with him, but it's about a precedence that we've set, hiring part-time consultants, and I think that's a precedent we need to correct moving forward.
What would your, how would you remedy that, Councilmember Condit? You wanna hire a full-time staff person?
Well, unfortunately, with our economic times, we probably cannot make that judgment call right at the moment, but that will be a budgetary, I know that's where we were headed anyways. With the last time we authorized his contract as a city council, we were looking at exploring a full-time permanent position. But I, I do not think that we should move forward with a part-time consultant in this capacity. And I do think we need to look at the bigger picture here, and we are gonna have to consider some alternatives moving forward with our budget. And we are gonna be looking at a leaner budget, and we just need to be mindful of that.
But I believe Mr. Westbrook also said the money for the position is through the redevelopment money. It has no impact on general fund at all.
That's correct.
Okay.
No, I completely understand that, but again, I don't think we should have a part-time consultant in this aspect. And that's just, that's my, I think we've set a bad precedent with that currently. And I would like to see that corrected moving forward, and that's just where I'm standing with my position.
Hey, Tom, this is Councilmember.
Would you be all right with doing a contract until September when we discuss all of the budget and the positions? Or would you just as soon have him no longer work for the city effective whenever his contract is up now? And then?
Well, if you're asking, I'm gonna be voting no on this item tonight. So I, I do think that moving forward, we, we should eliminate the position for now or at least consider freezing it.
Thank you. Councilmember Durasse, did you have something?
Yeah, you know, I, I had a conversation with our past city manager multiple times every year that this would come up, and it was the cost savings. And again, I agree in regards to what the city manager stated and what you stated, Vice Mayor, that, I mean, this is not general fund money. And I think, and again, understanding the position as much as I understand the position, of course, I'm not in that position. However, it's, you know, we're in this dire times. I mean, everything's getting shut down right now. And again, if there's something that he can bring to the table, why I would vote for him, him bringing something to the table that's going to help the city of Series financially, then yes, it's, it's a no-brainer. But at the end of the day, Mr. Westbrook, do you believe that this is something that we gotta have?
It's critically important. The reason being is because in transitioning into the new position as city manager, my old position is not filled, so I don't have time to spend. Steve is a valuable resource to me. When I get inquiries from folks that need a response right away, I can, I can rely on Steve to get the answers I need to them in an expeditious manner. So Steve is critical to the success of the city, and having him in that position, I think, is, is a benefit to us all.
It was a full-time position, that'd be costing us. Sorry, Vice Mayor.
Okay, what was your question, what, what full-time would cost us?
Yeah, this was a full-time position. What would that cost us? About 180, 190, count benefits and everything?
It would probably be somewhere around there, might be a little bit less, but it's, it's gonna be probably at least 150,000 a fully burdened position with medical and benefits.
Right. All right, thank you.
Well, I've said this before, and I think I have the unique experience of having worked for the city for almost 30 years, and I've worked with numerous economic development, full-time employees. And I will say this again about Mr. Hallam, that I think as a part-time consultant, he has done more for us economically than the full-time, regular employees that were hired as economic development. And that, that's from my perspective of having worked for the city. So with all of that said, I will ask if the, anyone in the public has any comment about this item, approving a contract with Steve Hallam for continued support for redevelopment and economic development activities? I don't see anyone with their hand raised, do you, City Clerk? One hand was just raised, that is Janie Yee-Klee. I will unmute his mic. Mr. Yee-Klee?
In the past, what has been the process for finding someone on a steady basis? Have they, has there been a lot of people apply for those positions through the years? You hardly hear anything about this particular person in that position.
Well, it's been a long time since we've had a, a regular employee. And I don't know, given the job market now, if you went out and advertised what your results would be. I, I, I don't think anyone can answer that question.
How long has this gentleman had that position in part-time?
Mr. Westbrook, do you know?
2015.
2015.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that has a comment? Vice Mayor, there are no other hands raised. Thank you. Seeing no other comments, could I have a question? Yes, Miss, yes.
If this wins two to one, one way or the other, Tom, does it have to be a 3-0 vote?
You need three votes, yes.
It has to be a 3-0 vote.
You, you need three affirmative votes.
So if it goes two to one, then we lose Tom Hallen.
It wouldn't pass, yes, wouldn't pass.
So I'm gonna make a motion that we table this until we have other council members available to help vote.
And I would second that. Can I have a roll call, please? Councilmember Durasse?
Yes.
Councilmember, oh.
Sorry.
Councilmember Condit?
Is this a vote to table it?
Yes.
Okay, hi.
And Vice Mayor Rhino?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. Do we need a specific date, Mr. Hallen and?
No, not on this item.
All right, so Mr. Westbrook, do you want to try and get it on the next agenda when we should have a full council?
Yeah, we can just move it to the next agenda.
Great, thank you. We have no unfinished business, public hearing. Public hearing to consider approving a planned community master plan amendment to modify the existing master plan from potentially developing a professional office complex or senior housing complex to instead construct 18 homes on a 1.67 acre site at 2453 and 2455 East Hatch Road. Mr. Westbrook, are you doing the staff reporters, Mr. Michaels?
Mr. Michaels will give the staff report.
I will do it. And thank you very much, Vice Mayor Rhino. So to give you some history on this, back in 2001, the city had approved a general plan amendment, a rezone, and a tentative subdivision map and a master plan for the 2501 to 2513 East Hatch Road and 2453 to 2455 East Hatch Road site areas. The master plan included two phases of development. Phase one included a professional office complex proposed at the 2501, 2513 East Hatch Road. And phase two would be for the 2453 to 2455 East Hatch Road being either a continuation of the office complex or the development of a senior housing project. And that would be on the 1.67 acre site area. Approval of the phase one included development of a 20,000 square foot professional office complex. It's gonna be comprised of seven buildings, of which to date, only three of the seven have been constructed. Phase two included either expanding the office complex with six additional buildings or developing a senior housing project consisting of like 13 single-family homes with each dwelling being about a 13 underscore feet in size. However, the phase two development never took place. As a result, the face-to-site area remains undeveloped. And what staff has been dealing with for the past 15 years is we've only received a couple of inquiries about the possibility of developing the phase-two site. And so at June 15th, 2020, Plan Commission considered a development proposal for an amendment to the master plan, a vested tentative subdivision map, and a planned community development plan in testament to subdivide the, the phase-two site into 18 residential lots. And a development plan to construct 18, 18 homes on those lots. They will range anywhere from 1390 square feet to 1,630 square feet. Upon addressing questions that were raised at the meeting with respect to perimeter fencing, appearances of the homes, vehicle access, attorney movements in and out of the site, the Plan Commission determined that the conditions of approval for the product appropriately addressed the questions raised at the hearing and recommend that the city council approve the master plan amendment by 3-1-1 vote. So the zoning ordinance gives authority to the planning commission to act only as the advisory body to make a recommendation to the city council for a master plan amendment. And so with the tentative map and development plan requests, they are contingent upon the city council approving the master plan amendment. The council must approve the amendment in order for the commission's approval of the tentative map and the development plan to be valid. In general, staff supports the project. It, it's staff's opinion, it promotes a high-quality product for the overall layout of the site, and it maintains consistency with the site's office general plan designation as single-family residences are permitted under this designation. And so that concludes staff's presentation at this time. Be happy to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Michaels. Is there anyone on the council with a question for Mr. Michaels or comment?
I just have a couple of questions. Mr. Michaels? So I, I did notice that the chairperson of the Plan Commission voted against this item. Is there a reasoning? I guess I didn't read a reasoning as to why that was voted against.
It was primarily the appearance, she felt that there more could have been done, I believe, to the appearance of the homes. I think she thought they were a little too simple. Staff is under the impression that it was, you know, it's still a good product, but, you know, that was, I believe, is what she had indicated.
Yeah, no, it looks like a good product to me, so it, it looks great as far as aesthetics. So it looks very good. I did have a question about, I guess, the neighboring business, the commercial property that is neighboring to the, the property.
Seven, oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, is there gonna be any traffic concerns with the turn coming out the hatch? I, I guess, are the residents gonna have issues or is the business owner's gonna have issues with, you know, if they have to access the commercial property in order to get to their homes? Is that gonna be issue or is there any sort of resolution to make that easier for the business owners as well as the residents?
It, it was staff's opinion when, I think, I believe the concern of the, at the time, the gentleman was indicating that there'd be maybe some traffic that would, if people would end up, from the neighboring development, the proposed development might obstruct some of their parking stalls or what have you. I believe that's what the main issue was. And staff's response at that time was, was more like, well, a lot of the, we assume that a number of the residents that will live here, they're probably gonna be working during the day when most of the, when probably the business, the office building there is gonna be operating during the day. And then when they come home, there, there shouldn't be a conflict with, you know, interruptions.
Yeah, so you, you don't think they'll be utilizing any sort of parking spaces in that business property?
I, I wouldn't see that they, you know, that they would. Now, could they, the project has been conditioned to require reciprocal access agreement between the property, between the, the two phases. But I, I, I don't see that as being a real issue. I really don't.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, Councilman Condit, one of the things here too is that the, this residential subdivision has a direct access to Hatch Road as well.
Yeah.
It would be more of a concern if it didn't. When this project, Mr. Michaels mentioned, was originally approved back in 2001, it, this residential area did not have an access to Hatch Road, so everybody was funneled back to the, the main access to this commercial building. So we believe that because there's an access direct to Hatch Road, there should be minimal impacts to the commercial lots.
Excellent, okay, that's great. Is there HOA component to this project?
Yes, yes, there is.
Okay.
It will be, the residential on the phase-two site, they will be required to form an HOA for the maintenance.
And if, if I'm understanding correctly, is there gonna be like, it's more of a gated community type?
It will be that kind of feel.
Okay.
In staff's opinion, but it's, they weren't actually going to actually have gated access, I believe. They, they were gonna have the, improve the perimeter fencing with walls. But I, they were gonna have- But I, they were gonna have some decorative columns at the main entrance.
Right.
At East Hatch Road. Originally, they were thinking that we just leave it open, you know, become an open look, you know.
Okay, excellent. Well, thank you so much for answering my questions.
You're welcome.
Member Durasse, do you have any questions before I open it to the public? Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this item? Mr. Yeakley, yeah, I can't see anything right now. Whoops, there we go. Okay, Mr. Yeakley.
Yes, I'd just like to know, seeing, I guess it was, Councilmember Condit said something about, is there gonna be a fee basis place like an HOA? In the plan for this, on the adjoining property with the business and the entrance on East Hatch Road, are those gonna be gated to try to hopefully? No?
No, they won't be gated.
About the people that you don't wanna come in?
They won't be gated.
Not like the one on Moffett?
Not like the one on Moffett, no. This is not proposed for a, for any type of restricted gates.
Could it be, though?
They haven't proposed that. It could be, but that's not what was before the Planning Commission, and they haven't proposed that at this time.
Could that be something that the city could ask them to consider?
We could, but if that's something they desired, they would have proposed that in the beginning.
All right. I mean, you know, if some of us live there, I think by living in the city for so long as we have, we would probably want a gated community with card access or some kind of code to keep unwanted people out. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to address this item?
Vice Mayor, there's another hand raised, however, it's just a phone number. I will unmute the mic.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Helen Mays. I'm a family friend of one of the owners of parcel number seven of the commercial complex. And looking over the plans and specifically on items number five A and B from the Planning Commission meeting that addressed this development, I'm looking here and it says, under A, the applicant shall record and maintain a revocable reciprocal access and parking maintenance agreement that grants non-restrictive access between the subject property and the east adjacent properties within the Olive Wood Office Complex, again, this commercial development that already existed, to use the dry aisles and parking areas. And then the next item says, if applicable, the applicant shall record and maintain it in a revocable reciprocal access and maintenance easement agreement that grants non-restrictive access between the subject property and the east adjacent properties within the Olive Wood Office Complex, AKA Olive Wood Hatch Road, et cetera, for the storm drain system, sanitary sewer, and water main utilities and other utilities that may be required by the city engineer. Have there been any plans submitted in terms of in terms of what is, what the development will require, what the city will require, and who will bear the cost of these city services that may be needed during the construction, et cetera, of this development?
At, at this point, because the project has not been approved, there has been no creation of what's called the improvement plans. That'll be the actual plans that, that develop the subdivision. These are pretty standard conditions. The developer of the residential property will be required to provide the storm drainage, the sewer and the water connections for their residential development. That's, that's a part of their construction cost.
The, the concern for the property owner, this parcel number seven, now mind you, the owner of the property that's being developed or owns the other six parcels to this commercial development is who will bear the cost of any city services that may be needed, any traffic issues that may arise? So that's a concern there, given if you actually look at where the thoroughfare of exiting that development on, into the parking area of the commercial structure, it's, 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 you know, it is a concern because there is quite a distance from the exit or entrance or exit into the development in, you know, to Hatch Road, which would be obviously where persons living in the development would enter and exit onto. Do we even know, would the city or Planning Commission require perhaps a traffic study there at all in terms of what would be, what would be the potential of any traffic issues in that, in that area in terms of? I mean, Hatch Road is already a busy development. You know, in terms of exiting and entering, is that going to create a traffic hazard or situation? Because, I mean, let's face it. Obviously, if some of the, the persons that are buying into this development find it more convenient given traffic issues, et cetera, that they might be using that exit and entrance more, more so than they would directly coming from Hatch just to avoid traffic issues because it gives them the ability to, to potentially, you know, have more access onto different areas of the roadway.
Mr. Westbrook, aren't both of the ingress egresses to that potentially both onto Hatch Road? There isn't a back road to get?
Correct. Yeah, so the residential development has a direct access point, just like the existing commercial development does.
Yeah, I'm sorry. One of the questions is, is there going to be a, a left turn onto Hatch? Is, is that going to be allowed after the, the, the development is, you know?
The, the new development will have a right in, right out, and a left in. They won't have left out access.
So, so Westbrook, you're saying that they can't make a left onto Hatch Road. Is that what you're saying?
From the new residential subdivision, that is correct. They cannot make a left onto Hatch Road.
Oh, but they will be able to do that from the commercial, so.
That is correct.
She is saying is, because they won't be able to do it from the residential, they're gonna start cutting through the commercial so they can make their left turn. I think that's what she's saying.
Yep, and it's important that the, that the developers of this, this residential project are also the owners of the commercial project, with the exception, I believe, of Lot Seven. So they can work out those details with the developer in terms of maintenance and access, et cetera.
So the city wouldn't be involved in that? And that, or the Planning Commission wouldn't have any discretion in terms of, of that, that particular issue?
Yeah, it would be, it would, that would all be done under the reciprocal parking and access easement that is a condition of a project approval.
Okay, yeah, there is a bit of an issue there in terms of there's CCNRs that specifically require the owner to give notice, and that wasn't done. That's a side issue, and that'll be taken up on a separate note, without city involvement, obviously. But, yeah, that is something that is a concern. I think you've answered all my questions, so I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Mays.
Thank you.
City Clerk, do we have anyone else that has a comment?
Are no other hands raised, raised, Vice Mayor?
Okay, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for discussion or for a motion. City Council, is there further discussion or does someone have a motion to make for this item?
I think we lost Councilman Durasse.
Okay, we'll need to wait for him again.
Vice Mayor, a hand was just raised.
After I close the public hearing?
Yes.
Mr. Hallinan, I can reopen it for that comment or not?
Uh, council's call.
Then if someone has their hand raised, please allow them to speak.
Sure. The name of the person is Gary Rogers. I will unmute your mic.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes, we're here. This is Gary Rogers and Ben Penfield. Gary Rogers is the architect on the development. I am actually one of the developers with JMP Homes. We didn't know if you had any questions for us. We didn't, we're used to being asked instead of at the last minute, so sorry. We raised our hand at the last minute. We didn't want, didn't know if you had any questions. We're the developers of the project.
Um, councilmember, do you have a question for the developer?
I don't have any questions, just, you did a great job, Ms. Rogers. Project looks great. We're excited to have it here in Series.
Thank you. Glad to put it there.
Long time coming.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
Thank you.
We'll be waiting for Councilmember Durasse to rejoin so we can have a motion.
I, I don't see him connecting.
Well, I'm sending him a text to see if he's having an issue with his internet or something. Mr. Hallinan, we can't go further until we have Mr. Durasse, right?
No, we can't, Vice Mayor.
Okay.
Technically lost our quorum temporarily.
Okay. He's not responding to his text either.
Vice Mayor, perhaps?
I'm getting, I'm getting a call just a second. I think it's from him. The internet at his home went out, so he's trying to connect via telephone or hopefully the connection on his phone will work, so we'll give him a few minutes.
I was just gonna mention, Vice Mayor Rhino, while we wait for Councilman Durasse, if we wanna jump head to reports and maybe take care of some of that and then come back to this item. Is that permissible, Mr. Hallinan?
Well, we, we actually ought to wait since,
Yeah.
Since we, like I say, we've technically lost our quorum. Now, under these circumstances, we get a lot of leeway, but I would just wait.
Okay.
Ms. Perez, when we sent the announcement to Councilman Durasse, it includes the phone number, correct?
It says. I'm going to text him the phone number with the login.
I see somebody coming on, Councilmember, connecting to audio.
Hello?
Hello, you're there.
I can see you.
Oh, I can see you. Okay, we're back.
Sorry.
All right, we were at, if you had any questions?
No questions.
No questions, and we are waiting for a motion for the item number ten.
I move to approve 2020-75 and 2020-76.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Durasse?
Yes.
Councilmember Condit?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Rhino?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero.
All right, now we're moving to new business, resolution number 2020-77, adopting a subrecipient agreement in Stanislaus County and the City of Series for receipt of coronavirus aid relief and economic security coronavirus relief funds. Mr. Westbrook?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Rhino. As you may know, back in March, the federal government allocated money to the state of California, 150 billion, I believe. Ninety-six million allocated to Stanislaus County. Of that 96 million, Stanislaus County has decided to to be generous to their partners, all the cities within the county, and has allocated another 15 million dollars to be shared amongst the cities per capita to aid in coronavirus response and, and to supplement some of the funds that maybe we expended that were not included in our budget all the way from March 1st until December of 2020. With that, the county share of that funds was about 1.6 million. Writing of this report, just in the last week or so, the state of California also allocated some CARES Act funding in the state budget, also on a per capita basis. That state funding is about $600,000. Essentially, what the county has told us, all of the cities, is that if the cities do get an allocation from the state, then they're gonna back that amount out. So essentially, what would happen is we would get around 600,000 from the state of California and a little over a million from Stanislaus County. So the, the subsipient agreement tonight just memorializes that again. We just need the resolution adopted by the council so that we can start the process with the county.
Thank you.
Any questions you may have?
Thank you. Is there anyone on the council that has a question for Mr. Westbrook? No? Anyone in the audience that has a question? Do we have anyone with their hands up, Ms. Perez?
No, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Then I will ask for a motion on resolution number 2020-77.
Move to approve 2020-77.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Durasse?
Yes.
Councilmember Condit?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Rhino?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero.
Discussion items, dedication of the Whitmore Museum to honor local residents. Mr. Westbrook?
Yeah, just a verbal report here. Councilman Condit at a previous meeting had indicated that there was a desire to maybe memorialize some longtime members of the Series Historical Society and put some recognition at the Whitmore Museum. So we've talked with Councilman Condit about that. He gave me some contacts for the family members to, to make that happen. If it's the desire of the council, I'll be working with Public Works Director to get something set up that we can probably put on the inside of the museum and then have some dedication ceremony when we can all get back together again with the families involved. So I didn't know, Councilmember Condit, if there was anything that you wanted to add?
Oh, sure. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I just think this is a good nod to history, to our city's history. I think the Reiners family and the Bergamashi family have done tremendous things for our community. They were the original curators of that museum. We have a great museum, we have a great historical society, and I think it's just always good as a city to embrace our history and to also give recognition where recognition is due. So I do think this is important and I really appreciate the support of this project.
And I would agree with Councilmember Condit, and I'm in support of what staff comes up with.
I am too.
Okay, that's what we needed. We'll work with Jeremy and the families to get something together. And when we have that ready, we will let the council know when that can be dedicated.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Westbrook. Councilmember referrals, any councilmembers that would like to have an agenda item placed on a future agenda shall make a request under this section of the agenda. Is there any councilmember with a request? No? Then I will move on to reports. Councilmember Durasit, do you have anything, an announcement tonight other than you're sideways and, oh, there you are.
Tell them I'm on a phone, so we're back.
Oh, you're doing well. Okay.
I have nothing.
Councilmember Condit?
Nothing to report tonight.
Mr. Westbrook?
Yeah, just wanted to let the council and all the public members know that today was the beginning, the start of the nomination period for the city council seats. As the council's aware, District Three, District Four and the mayor's seats are all up for election at this point. Also, on kind of a sad note, I think that we talked a little bit about it in the opening under Citizens Communication. The governor of California did restrict a bunch of businesses and industries today. It became effective immediately. Those closures are fitness centers, places of worship, barber shops, nail salons, malls, et cetera. So there was a bunch of new businesses today that are now not supposed to be operating. In addition to that, like I mentioned, I've talked with Chief Collins on numerous occasions about this. We seek to educate our business first before we do anything else. And so we are moving forward. Also, just to let you know, you probably had seen a significant increase in the number of COVID cases. Last week, there was a discrepancy between the state of California and what Stanislaus County had. It resulted in a jump of 1,300 cases overnight. So now, today at about 5 o'clock, I looked, there's over 5,000 cases of COVID from the start of the pandemic. So in the middle of March until today. So the name, the, the numbers continue to increase. To the extent possible, stay home if you can. That's all I had.
Thank you. Mr. Hallinan?
Sorry, my dogs were barking a while ago. I have nothing to report, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Perez?
Yes, Vice Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to follow up on what City Manager Westbrook mentioned. The nomination period did open up today, July 13th, and closes on August 7th. Appointments will be required. So for the candidates wishing to run for office, please contact the city clerk's office to make an appointment. Up to date candidate sign up chart is posted on the city's website under elections. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Collins?
Yeah, I just wanted to take the time to thank Captain Crane and Chief Wise for spearheading the fireworks campaign this year. And the officers, dispatchers and our record staff who worked very hard under some very trying times. Overwhelming, really. I had the opportunity to sit out front of my just listen and see what was going on throughout the entire county. And I thought they did a fabulous job responding.
Fire Chief Wise?
Thank you, Chief Collins. Tonight, we were going to, the original plan was to honor Patrick Leboe, who was the gentleman that helped rescue the couple from the Grover Fire. We, with, with going to the Zoom meeting, we weren't able to do that, but we were, we were going to honor him tonight. And I've talked to him a couple of times now, a very humble gentleman. So I look forward to open back up to the public. I think it's, see right here, we got something special for him. So looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Captain Crane?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor Rhino. Working off of what Chief Collins was saying, I really would like to thank all of our personnel that worked. They worked very hard this weekend. Just in short, we responded to 313 fireworks calls from Friday, Saturday and Sunday. That was a swell increase for your So our guys were really, really moving. We're still going through all the data that we got and deciphering the data.
Thank you. Ms. Diaz?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. I wanted to let the council know that we have a recent retirement. Mary Fenton, the Finance Department Administrative Secretary retired July 7th after almost 52 years with the city.
Wow.
It's been a long time. She was hired August 1st, 1968. So she missed 52 years by December a month. But she decided it was time and so she put in her paperwork. So due to the pandemic, we were not able to throw her a retirement party, but we are planning a drive-by parade. So we'll let you, we will keep the council updated as to our plans for that.
Perfect. Thank you. Mr. Padilla?
I have nothing tonight, Vice Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Damas?
I have nothing tonight, Vice Mayor.
Mr. Lor? Mr. Lor? Mr. Slater?
Nothing, Vice Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Lor, did you have something? No. Supervisor DiMartini?
Yes, good evening, Vice Mayor Rhino and members of the council. I wish I could be there with you tonight, but I guess it just didn't work out again. I have an annual report from the county assessor that you might have an interest in some of the figures. The total value, assessed value in the city limits of Series is 3 million, 379, 3 billion, rather. That 379,159,000. That's an increase over last year of 134,691,000. And that equates to a 4.15% increase in the value of the property. That's pretty close to the county average. The average of everything was 4.93% increase in value. I just thought you might find that interesting.
It is. Thank you. Do you have any?
That's all I have.
You don't have any additional updates on that?
Well, with the coronavirus, I mean, it just changes by the day. We were, thought that things would stay the same and all of a sudden the governor came out with, you know, a new edict to just shut everything down again. Our shopping malls, our restaurants, our barber shops. I don't know what to think. We'll be taking it up tomorrow. There's not a lot we can do about it. I can tell you that, you know, the, there are increases in cases of the coronavirus, but the hospitals are still able to handle those who need to be hospitalized, which is really not that many. And the, the amount of deaths of this are extremely low. So unless you're elderly with the underlying health issues, you know, you might get sick from it, but you won't die from it. But it's just a, the virus just does not seem to be going away. We thought it would go away with the hot weather, but that is just not the case. We're just going to have to deal with it. I would expect, you know, another hit on the sales tax with all these businesses shut down.
Right.
Now, it's, I'm sorry to see that Pasta Pronto had to close down.
Me too. I was really enjoying their takeout, so I was disappointed.
I was, I was really, no, I can't say I was surprised they closed out, but very disappointed too. That was really a good restaurant in your newly revitalized downtown. And then, I don't know, this is just a different year, so I, we'll get through it. At least we have the money to cover your costs anyway through the federal government.
That, that's true.
Yeah, so I, I don't know. We'll, we'll just do the best we can. But, but the good news was your value of your property in the city is up 134 million dollars more than last year.
That's amazing, yeah.
Property values have really been strong. Okay, hope to join you at the next meeting in person.
Thank you, Supervisor. Mr. Westbrook, before I adjourn, do we have any sense that we are going to attempt to have our meeting in person or do we know? Is it too far away to figure that out?
I would say at this point, it's a little bit too far away. As Supervisor DiMartini mentioned, the governor put new restrictions in place today. It seems like we could get more restrictions. So at this point, plan on Zoom, but we hope to be seeing you all again shortly.
Great, thank you. With that, I will adjourn this meeting until our next regular meeting of July the 27th. Thank you.